Okay, welcome everyone to our September School Board meeting. And as usual, we acknowledge that Ogden is located on the traditional land of the great Salt Lake, Fremont, Northern Shoshone, and Goshu tribes. And we will start our meeting off with the Pledgeful Allegiance led by our Business Administrator.
Please stand. After me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will jump right in and invite Joseph Santos from Ben Lomond High to come up and present on celebrating the arts.
Board President, Superintendent, members of the board, I just want to take a moment to introduce Joseph. He is, as noted on our synopsis for the year, our first spotlight for the arts. And he has brought with him and set up in our display some of the work of his students. He is, as you noted, at Ben Lomond High School. He has also been one of our Ramp volunteer teachers for the last couple of years. So he's going to talk to you a little bit about that. And I'm very excited because he teaches such specialized classes and his students really get to explore a craft and the expression in our arts and portrait of graduate standards. So I'll go ahead and defer to Joseph.
Good evening, everyone. Sarah said I'll be third. But it's a great opportunity.
Welcome to the pledge.
So this is a great opportunity to be able to present to you the amazing kids who participated in the Ramp 2025 summer program. So I will be presenting on the screen right now are their works because I taught photography, digital photography and jewelry for those students who would like to spend their summer, you know, learn more art skills. So these are the examples. I taught them the different digital photography skills like long exposure photography. You'll see there, obviously they're smiling, I guess they're enjoying it. We, I would like to, the goal is, I would like to make these skills that they have learned to be integrated or in line with Utah's Portrait of a Graduate wherein they will be able to use the skills that they will learn from this short-term, two-week lesson to maybe a career, but also to be able to be independent, like independent individuals wherein they can actually generate money with their learned skills. Because me, as a photographer, I actually started when I was a student and I was able to generate money, you know, getting paid, maybe not that much around during my time. So they also learned steel light photography. And these are not real food though. We don't have enough budget to buy this food, but, but the props are great. So they learned also how to do portrait and some of them are actually volunteering now to do senior photographs for, for students that are graduating. Yeah, so, and also some of, this was the really, the fun activity that we've done to learn how to use the shutter speed. And also for jewelry, this. So we learned how to make jewelry with paracords with wire beads and polymer. If you check on that case right over in that corner, you'll see some of the samples that the students have done. So the program really helped these students a lot to learn, like I said, these new skills for them to be able to develop that skills and, you know, generate maybe, maybe income for themselves. Yep, anything you want to say. Yeah. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer to my best.
All of Ramp. All of Ramp is open to the entirety of Weber County. The majority of them knew Joseph, knew of this class, so most of them were Ogden students.
Ogden students, yes. Some of them are friends. This time I have actually students that, that are from, what do you call this, a different high school, a different county, but they are friends with some Ben Lomond students who were encouraged to, to join the Ramp. Yeah.
Yeah, I worked a lot with Ramp too. Can you, can you explain more the connection between Ramp and this program? Is it just funding that we get, grants that we receive from them that allows us to do this specialized, like art, art stuff? Or, and, and how do we apply for that? Is that through a nonprofit that we apply for it or as a, as a school we're able to do that?
Thank you so much for that question.
So we get to work with Ally Johnson who supports us in writing the grant application each year in conjunction with our arts educators who say that they are willing to volunteer to provide this arts experience from skilled artists. The foundation helps us finalize our application. And then we were very fortunate, for example, this year we usually do get the majority. This year we got all of the funding that we requested. Some of these were repeat opportunities like that from Joseph. Some of them were new opportunities. We had a youth choir for the first time. We, we ask our tremendous committee and, sorry, community of artists, you know, who's willing to do this? Joyce has been involved and supported us with theater opportunities for the greater Weber County area. We recently completed that annual report. This is separate from our city grants that fund our Festival of the Arts. We write this grant separately and we got tremendous feedback this year. We did exit surveys of everybody and a lot of people commented not just on the value of the skill, but the tremendous capacity of our educators to work with their children, which I felt really good about. That, that isn't possible with some other arts opportunities, but because we have artists who are educators, I think we offer a really great experience.
Go ahead, Amber.
I just wanted to say that that was the most jam-packed paper you gave us with so many links and so much information and I loved it. So thank you for all your hard work and what you did with students over the summer.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, everyone, thank you.
Do we have anyone signed up for public participation? No. Okay. Okay. So now it's time for the consent calendar. And, oh. Did she want to say something?
No, she was just asking me if my brother Harvey now is on.
She is. Is she on yet?
So she's virtual. You were coming to meet with her, right?
Yeah, I was going to meet with her.
She, she is not going to be here tonight. She is on virtual. She had to work in Salt Lake.
Did I mention that word, member always joining us virtually?
She did.
Okay. Usually I don't, so. So I know there were some questions about the consent calendar. Were those addressed? I think, okay, okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Motion by Board Member Zundel and second by Board Member.
I'll second that.
Dunley. All in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, on to the superintendent's report.
Yep. Sorry, I was having some computer problems. I think I got it figured out though. So I just wanted to share this with you all to kind of show you what we've been doing at schools. We've started doing our site visits. So we do these three times a year. It's kind of a, we, we're in schools a ton, but this is really that, that formal time where we're able to go in and meet with schools and we're able to really kind of see what they need and dive into, dive deeply into what they need. We do a beginning of the year one. We all go out onsite, including our entire cabinet, to see kind of all aspects of what's happening in the school to make sure that they're getting off to the right start and what can we do to continue to support their plan. We do a middle-year visit, which is more with the principal, then we do an end-of-year visit, which is again kind of whole, whole team. Just, this is the form we use, just kind of wanted to show you. We, we really have a, have a pretty tight agenda. We like to get in classrooms. One of the things that, so every school will, will fill this out and it kind of helps guide the discussion. One of the things we really focus on is those surveys that we, that we send out to all of our employees that really gauge their needs. And we've identified two large needs that the schools are really trying to work on that was kind of rose to the top of needs of our employees. And that was really that collaborative process and how we can try to work that in to save people time. And so we start that off with how are the schools doing in their collaborative team meetings? What support do they need? How is that data work going? How can we support them in, in supporting their, their teams within their, their schools in meeting the needs of students? And the schools are able to really articulate and tell us where they're at in that process and what we can do as a district to help support them. Oftentimes from that conversation, we end up having requests to have Ross come in, Adam come in, Heather come in, different team members come in to help support a certain process within the school. That's what, that's kind of the first thing we walk through. One of the other things we've been working on is that employee recognition piece. And so we were able to hear what the schools are doing to recognize their employees and they kind, it's kind, that's a fun part because we get to see the intentionality with what they are doing at each school to really make sure their employees are feeling appreciated and recognized, their needs are being met. And then we dive into their school plan. So we, we look at their school goals. We start with PBSS. So their behavior support systems, positive behavior support systems. We look at celebrations. We look at what's going well, but then we look at barriers and we see what, what are some obstacles that, that they have in that area? And then what are some needs? What are some things that we can do to help support them as a district to make sure the school is moving forward the best that it can? So it's really a time for us to support schools. We go through with what, well, that's what the district's there for is we're here to support the schools. That's our role. And so we really embrace that, just go in open-minded and just listen to what they need. We focus on their academic goal and their talent development goal as well, within their school plan, all of which connect to Nexus 2030, which is the district, the district goal. And then we, one of the, one of the really good benefits of the first of the year is that operations conversation. So while the academic team or the, the cabinet, my anchor leadership team is meeting with the leadership team at the school, Ken Crawford will go meet with the cafeteria folks, Mike Kipel will go meet with IT folks, and Alita meets with the, with the executive assistants and the ESPs at the school. So we have people that are all throughout the school meeting with different components of the school and we come back together. The principal already has a list, some of which gets addressed from those meetings that those others are having. But we're able to see like what is going on in the building? What facilities requests do you have? What needs do you have? What's going on with IT or office? What support can we provide to the school that you don't feel comfortable with or that you need so that we can try to get it taken care of at the first of the year? So then we have an action step sheet that's linked. So every school hasn't, we're logging and taking notes during this time and putting in action steps on what we need to do to respond to the school and tagging the person that's responsible to follow up on that action step. Then as an anchor leadership team, we meet every Tuesday and we, we go over, this is one of the agenda items. So this next Tuesday, thank you Sarah, shout out to Sarah for getting that ready. So Tuesday, we will start going over action steps of these meetings and make sure that we are following up systematically on, on that list and making sure that we're getting back to the school, getting the needs met, planning if somebody's going to go out. And, and so we just really make sure that we're following up on those action steps systematically to support schools. It's been great. So the schools are off to such a good start. It's been really fun to see classrooms. That's a big part of what we, what we do as well. We divide up and we get to go visit a bunch of classrooms just to see what's happening in the school. We, we kind of divide and conquer so we get a good, well-rounded vision of the school. But it's really, it's really nice to take teams out. Zane, Zane's there every single time as well. Here's some of the financial needs, but he goes on classrooms, we all go on classroom visits and just get in the classrooms and support teachers and kind of see firsthand what's going on. So I just thought I would share that process. It's a, it's one of my favorite things we do. It, it just schedules us in, in the building and we get to go out and support schools. So it's a lot of visits, but it's, it's, it's so much, so worth it. So I just wanted to share that with you. Any questions on that process?
I have a question.
Yes.
So you've already started the process?
Started it.
Okay.
Do you want to come?
Yes.
Yes. We can, we can, board members are welcome to come to any of those and some have, some have. So we've had board members come to those visits. Alita, I can have, you know, we can, we can invite. It's, it's a good, it's a good thing. So we would love to have board members be present at any of those. It's, it's a, it's a good thing to see and see the process in action and see our leaders be able to articulate their vision and what they're trying to do for kids. And it really helps us know firsthand what, what we need to do to support them. So it's been a, it's been fun. And then I wanted to share, one of the things I haven't talked about for a little while, if you guys recall, this was a few years back, we started this process. Jessica and her team really headed this out, but it's that, we, we started an academy school at Odyssey. And so we are really working to develop our own teachers through Odyssey. We have some grants that, that are helping support that. We're able to pay some stipends. We're able to get a large number of practicum students. We're able to get a large number of student teachers and some of our own employees out to Odyssey Elementary to really work with a magnificent leadership team out there on developing our teachers the way that we, that we want to develop them in Ogden. And it kind of releases a little bit of reliability on the university. It's, it's us developing our own teachers and helping them with scholarships to get their license. So there's scholarships available for them to continue and pursue the teaching career. It was exciting and this is, these, there's many more than this, but just this year we hired four former students to be at Odyssey and they're working in, in ESP positions at Odyssey, some of which want to be a teacher. And we will work with them to get scholarships. We placed four teachers this year from that program in our district. So we didn't have a lot of openings, but four of the teachers that we placed this year came from the academy school. And so it's starting, those fruits are starting to ripen and we're starting to pick them. So, so, so it's been a little bit of a process to get that up and running, but it's, it's, it's a really, it's a good partnership. Like I said, it, it's a really low-cost effort because we have a partnership with a school, the Center for Schools of the Future who pays us to, to help run this program. And it's, it's really benefited us and starting to benefit us as we look to develop our own and hire our own and grow our own. It's just one more component in that, in that link. So I thought I would share that with you. And then I have some, a really cool celebration. So both of our high schools, I have the certificates here. I wish they were here. I, I will go deliver these. Maybe I could have waited, but it was exciting. But Ben Lomond and Ogden High School, so we have, it's Ben Lomond's certificate, but they were one, they were two of only five high schools in the entire state of Utah that had an above average, the above the state average graduation rate. So above 88%. They had an above average graduate, the state average graduation rate while simultaneously having 40 or more MLL students, with students learning English. Only five high schools in the entire state, only five, and we had two. And so we were excited to, to see that they hit that mark and were recognized by the state board. So that's all I have. Unless there's questions?
I do have a question. So the academy at Odyssey, are they typically going on to Weber State or different schools?
A lot, a lot of the students are going to be Weber State students, right? So they're, they're in the Weber State program. They get placed there as student teachers. We work with them. We're able to pay them to student teach. We're able to, through that academy school lens, kind of help develop them. Practicum students are having experiences down there as well. And then like, like with the students that we just hired that are diving in to be ESPs, we can say, hey, here's an opportunity and help develop them into that, that program as well. So, yeah, good question.
Any other questions further? Okay. Yeah, we'll turn it over to our Business Administrator for his.
Thanks Joyce, just a few things, items of information. So we're, we're in full swing with our audit so we can get our financial report in by the first of October and then they actually have till the end of November to finish their report. But that's in full swing. I got back the first draft of our updated capital improvements plan. And to complete that this year, we want to put in a draft or a narrative of what we anticipate or what we see happening in the next like five years. And we're going to start meeting. We've got a district working group of the superintendent and I and Ken and Jared Cherry and Mark Blanchard initially to sit down and, and look at the timeline of certain things and what we feel like we need to address. Couple of the big projects we're looking at, what about our junior highs? We've got the old ROTC building, they call it, on the campus of Ogden High that needs help. So anyway, we, I'm thinking in a month or two, we should be able to have something in front of you that we can start talking about. And then just an FYI, because there's been a lot of scuttlebutt about the Taylor Canyon property, but we, we have been working with the city and they've been informed that we're not in any big rush to put a for sale sign on it. And they can take whatever time they feel like they need to, to make their choice or make their decision with regard to that. The 90 days is not up until around the first of December, so. And then if they need more time, we've told them we're, we're not in any big rush. So they seem to appreciate that. Also, you saw the big ticket item in the consented calendar for the asbestos abatement for Gramercy. Costs a lot of money to do that for those old schools because there's lots of stuff. Once that's abated, then we'll be sharing a bid proposal to demolish the building between the two. It's going to cost around $600,000 probably. But anyway, that's all I had to share tonight.
Questions for Zane?
I just want to say thank you for being patient, giving the city a chance to look at that. I know my community's really going to appreciate that.
You're welcome. And it was never our intention to rush them into anything, so, but we needed to get that ball rolling, so.
Okay, now we will have our first ever Student Board Representative Report. Alexa.
Is it on? Pit loads? Okay. So this is Ogden High. I wanted to report out on just a few of the things that we've been doing from the start of the school year to September primarily. So first I wanted to talk about our PBIS. It stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. So I know a topic we wanted to cover was attendance and how we can get students to school more often. This kind of helps with that. So it follows our school-wide rules, triple OT that we follow, which is on time, on task, and on track. In each part of the building, you'll find a sign and it just states like how you can be on time and on track and on task in each of these areas. So following the system, students are allowed, are able, teachers are allowed to, teachers are able to reward students by Tiger Points, which they can buy dance tickets, they can remove U's for attendance too. Yeah, so you can buy a lot with Tiger Points. Not only that, but I myself, when I have had good attendance, I've been selected for drawing for ski passes. I've actually won one and headphones. So just randomly, like random times throughout the year, they'll call you up and be like, congratulations, you had good attendance, here's this. So it's pretty cool. The only issue is that was getting like knowledge of these rewards out there. And that's how we came up with Clash of the Classes. This is our first, pretty much first year. We created it last year, middle of the year. We wanted to promote school spirit and reward students for good behavior. So once again, it follows our school-wide rules, triple OT, and it follows just one of them. So for September, we're focusing on being on time. So one thing that we used to do last year was let students out about five or 10 minutes early for lunch. However, this year, we've had complaints about that last year. So right now we are coming up with ideas for rewards for students because we don't want to spend a lot of money rewarding them on. So we don't have any money, but we are brainstorming and asking our, our school for feedback and ideas for rewards. And I also sit in on the PBIS meetings. I am the student representative for those. So I sit on, I sit in in those meetings and I report back what the school says. So that's that. And then I just wanted to report out about some areas of our school. So for our band, they are set to compete in their first competition, September 27th. Their theme this year is Neon Dreams. They are working hard and this is, they currently have a fourth state, they're state champions for the fourth year in a row and they're working hard to get it to five. So our JARU TC, they currently, last Friday, they held an orienteering event. So they planned it and hosted. Seven schools attended. So orienteering, they take a bunch of students out into the mountains. It's part of their curriculum. They teach them how to use a map, a compass, and they, it's like a competition-based thing. So it gets, allows students to experience that. It's really cool. For student government, this past month, we've been busy planning our homecoming dance and activities. The photo on the right you'll see is us after we decorated the morning of homecoming. And then we also held a special needs homecoming this week in our gym just to allow those students to experience it and not be as overwhelmed. And then our Latinos in Action, they are set to start tutoring kindergarten through sixth grade at Liberty and Odyssey this year. So they'll be helping students read, I'm pretty sure, yeah, just read. And they also are planning stuff for Hispanic Heritage Month. On October 8th, they have music, dancing, and food planned. And they're also working with other schools to plan a dance for Hispanic Heritage Month. So that's cool as well. And their theme for this year is You Belong. And for sports, I try to keep up as much as I can, but it's a lot. I do know we're in regions right now. Football is 4-1. For tennis and track, a few individuals have placed and won their matches. And for girls soccer, we're doing great. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I just had a couple of questions. On the 3OT, that's really cool, these, these things that you're pushing on there. Do you feel like it's having an impact that you notice with friends and other people paying attention to it?
I feel like it definitely gets the message out there because it gives students something that, it gives, allows students to know what focus the school is having for each month. So we give certain coins to a certain class for whoever's winning and that winning grade gets just a lot of rewards. And they're like, oh, okay, so if we have better attendance, we get this. So they're kind of like, oh, okay, maybe I'll start showing up on time.
It's building momentum. That's good. And the other one, is that special needs homecoming? That's really cool. Is this the first time that's happened or has that been happening for a while?
So as far as I know, we So as far as I know, we've done it since my sophomore year of high school. So that's like two years ago. We typically just save decorations from our original homecoming dance and we have it in the gym. Our student government members are there. We dance with them, have a playlist. It's just like a mini version of homecoming, just less overwhelming.
That's awesome. Thanks, Alexa. You did a great job on your presentation.
Thank you.
I was going to say, it's always fun when you see, I was the principal at Ogden High and I was talking to Shawna. So the PBIS team, all the schools have a PBIS team. And I was blown away when I was talking to Alexa and Shawna the other day that they actually, she sits on that PBIS team. So that's with the school leadership team and she's a student representative on that school team. Then she's then, so I don't know, I mean, you said that, but I just wanted to reiterate like that's a great idea. You're always, I'm always happy when the next principal is much better than the previous one, which was, which was with her ideas because she took, kind of took it to the next level. So I mean, that's just, you know, super, super cool that you get to go then, go out to students and get some feedback on what are some things that might work or how this is going or what the school is thinking and get feedback from your peers to take them back to that, that leadership team, correct? I just thought that was pretty cool. Has it been, have you felt like that is a helpful process to know that you've got a direct link to the administration? Have you felt good about that?
Definitely. It allows us to have communication between our student government, the leaders of the school. We kind of communicate it out to the students. So by being able to be in on those meetings and talk with the administrators and then talk with the students, it's just like really good chain of command, kind of.
Okay, thank you so much. Amber, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I love that report much. I would love one from every school if that would, you know, be possible. But no, she did a great job and it's really cool to hear what's going on at Ogden High. Thank you, Alexa.
Again, I showed up, sorry, Joyce, but I showed up to meet with Alexa, just a story. And I was like, hey, I just want to touch base with you. You're coming to board meeting. I'm like, you know, this is kind of how this will work. And, and, and she's like, I already have a, I already have a whole presentation. I'm good. And I was like, okay. It was really, so it's very impressive, young lady.
Thank you again. Stay tuned.
Well, I just want to echo everyone that, what a great presentation. And thank you so much for putting this together and reporting out because, you know, that's your experience and obviously we're not in there and you're like our eyes and ears. And so I'm just grateful to hear your perspective and for you to be bringing this information to us. And this is something new, like we didn't, you know, being, having a student representative was last year was kind of our experimental year. So was this just something that leadership, you decided to have the, the students now do these presentations for us?
I thought it was all Alexa.
All you, you were like, I'm going to come in and here's what I'm going to do.
Took the ball and went with it.
Well, I knew we were supposed to speak out on certain, like our opinions on certain things, but I really thought the position was more of like informing you guys on what was going on in our school and the experiences in the community there, so.
Well, I appreciate that and, and I hope that you will speak out on anything that needs to come, come to the board or, or be elevated out that, you know, if, if there are issues that we should be talking about, then I hope that you know that you can bring that to us. But yeah, I'm just super grateful to have you on the board with us and really appreciate this presentation.
Thank you.
And we will have a standing agenda item that is, that is a student board member report out. So that will be like a standard, a standard agenda item for board meetings. So next, next time it'll be one of the other students that'll be sharing out and.
You set a high bar.
And Alexa is starting, yeah, she's starting out strong. Thanks, Alexa.
Okay, Neville, turn time over to Jessica Bennington regarding some action items for our board policy.
All right, as, and as I'm turning this over to share my screen, actually, as we were doing our site visit at Ogden High today, we were there during a transition time. And I was in the basement hall and there were only three students past that tardy bell. And I just thought only three in that entire hall, you can see the whole length. So I was very impressed. So what you're doing is working. All right. I didn't share my screen as I was talking to you, did I? All right. So the first policy that you have in front of you, all of these ones for action have some type of policy revision. That's in the gray box within board policy. So the first one is our 3.11, our financial reserves. And it was asked that we add in where we find the information about Moody's ratings, just so that everyone on the, the board and our community knows where that comes from as we're looking at that, that fund balance. So any questions on this policy? All right. Moving over then to 7.600. This is the equal opportunity employment policy. While the laws have been being followed, this policy itself has not been updated. It previously didn't have a legal or a revision date at the bottom. So as we were studying this out and Nalita is exceptional at being able to investigate policy revisions, we found that when policies were renumbered, it didn't get added when this policy took effect. So we've just added that in here during this revision. So you'll see that it actually became part of the policy and law for board in April of 2008. So that'll be there for historical reasons. And then we'll add in these current revision, a date there. But what it is, is it's adding in the equal opportunity employment, that protected class includes sexual orientation or gender identity. Any questions on this policy?
I did have a question on that one. I emailed it over to the, to the board earlier. But on that one, I know like within that section of Utah Code, it does list all this, all the areas that, that where someone can be non-qualified. I just didn't know if our, if our policy would be better if we did include those as well, just to make it really clear that, you know, like while we're not discriminating against all these things, make it really clear in our policy, the things that can separate someone or change their promotions or things like that according to that same Utah Code.
Like their education and their experience and those things in law that you look at instead of the protected classes.
Yeah, education, training, ability, moral character, integrity, disposition to work. All those same things are within that same Utah Code. I just didn't know if that would help us in strengthening this policy to just make sure those are both mentioned together.
Yeah, so if that's a recommendation, we can take it back to policy and law for second reading and then bring it back to the whole board. Okay, any other questions on this policy? All right. So moving over to 9.100, the school year. This one is, there's a slight adjustment as, as the state has updated their policies. And the number one thing that we have to make sure that we're doing when we're creating our school year calendar is that we have at least 180 instructional days. And then the 990 minutes is still there. Minutes, my goodness, hours, wow. 990 instructional hours, that's based upon funding. So we strive to hit that 990, but the overall arching requirement is that 180. So we made sure to update that. And then another thing that we need to make sure that we plan for in our calendar is to have some weather-related contingency dates. So we're very clear to the community and to employees, if we have to cancel for a snow day or if we have to cancel for whatever reason, here are when those makeup days would be. So you can expect to see that in October when we anticipate bringing the calendar for year review and approval. And then for parent teacher conferences, it previously was listed as hours, but now it's, it's by days. So parent teacher conferences is allowed for up to three days within our calendar that we can use. So you'll see that revision there. And then a small update within procedure is changing from trimester, which we haven't been on for a little while, to semester and quarter. So any questions on this policy? All right. Moving over to, this is not as exciting as the Ogden High update, so I appreciate everybody's engagement. Emergency disaster, the adjustment here is simply removing one of the legal references that, that does not apply to this policy. So in reviewing that, it doesn't align to this policy. So it's just removing that. Any questions there? Okay. And then the last one to bring to your attention tonight for action is our wellness policy, 9.416. And this is adding mental health into our wellness policy. So you can see the areas that previously were outlined in that policy. Adding mental health will, of course, then add some additional procedures that we made sure to cover. And those are going to be found, let's see, under, we categorized it in two areas as the policy and law committee met, and we also engaged in collaboration with Mitch Arquette, Nicole Lovell. Seeing if I'm missing anybody. Anyway, if I missed somebody, I'm, I'm sorry. But we collaborated with all of those who are directors over these programs so that we can make sure that they can accomplish this in the schools and that it's very meaningful. So within healthy lifestyles, you'll see that we do partner with our school psychologists and social workers. I won't read all of them because I know they've been in your packet for review. And then adding in the mental emotional wellness programs for our school and what that looks like and how we engage with parents and provide them additional information and how we support and expect our schools to be ready to support our students with mental health needs. And then with that, then we go down to into the assessment measures. The assessment measures, all of our schools are assessed every three years and that information is published on our website. So you can see the most recent one that was conducted last year and see how each of the schools scored. So within that assessment measure, we've added in the section about mental health. So that will come up in the next cycle for assessment so that we can report that out. So those are those updates, adding mental health into the wellness policy. Any questions? Okay.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve first reading of these five policies.
I'd like a motion to, to approve the, these five changes to policy on the first reading.
Okay. So we have a motion by board member Peterson and a second by board member Burnell. All in favor?
Aye.
I was going to say one thing. Do we just clarify, were you going to take the one back to second reading, but you're approving all the rest on first reading? I just didn't want to approve them on first reading.
Yeah. Well, and I made a note to work that.
So that will all come back on the.
The motion was to approve on first.
First reading.
So that, that's what the motion was. So I just want to make sure.
But to exclude 7.600.
So, okay, just clarifying. So they're all, all going to come back, okay? Just didn't want to approve, okay.
Okay.
My bad. Just making sure.
No, you got her back, dude.
Just making sure. All right.
Did we vote?
They did vote.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve.
The other four.
Bring the other one back for a second reading, if you want.
I guess my question on that one wasn't that there was any problem with the current one. It was just merely a suggestion that it may strengthen our policy in the future to look at that one, include more language. So I have no problem with the policy the way it is right now. But just if you can put that on your agenda with policy and law to look at that again to perhaps strengthen that.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. We can do that.
Okay.
Okay, discussion items. Anyone have any issues they would like to discuss? Seemed up. So information items. Jessica, come back up.
All right. Pleasure to be here again. So there are two policies that we reviewed with no revision recommendations. So I won't pull those ones up unless you'd like me to. That was policy 2.104. And then that's the administrative organization plan as well as 11.102, our employee nondisclosure assurances policy. So no revisions recommended there. But there are a few procedure recommendations within our credit, school credits and graduation policy. So I'll pull that one up. Okay. So in this policy, as we were reviewing it, we recognized that within the tables where the credits are outlined, that were previously approved when we moved to the AB schedule. So like here you'll notice it says 28 hours or 28 credits in the bottom right corner. Up in the paragraphs above, the number wasn't updated. So the table was updated and approved for credits, but the number up in the paragraph describing it was not. So those revisions have been made here as well as then we adjusted the math course language that was outdated. So we've updated that. We updated the removal of the civics exam. And then the, probably the largest adjustment here in procedure is allowing our students in the traditional high schools to be able to apply to get the basic diploma. So previously, the basic diploma students would earn at George Washington High School. But if they want to stay at their traditional school and finish out their senior year, but maybe they're, they're not quite going to get that traditional diploma, they can opt to through that application, working with families to get that basic diploma. So that 20 requires the fewer credits to do that. If a student does choose to get that basic diploma, since they didn't meet the traditional high school requirements, they do not get to participate in the, the graduation ceremonies of, of walking across the stage. So that would be the difference there. So any questions on policy procedure?
Can I ask a question, Joyce? Do they count as graduates though, as far as graduation rates?
Yeah, and there was a couple of questions that came in for member Peterson as well. So yeah, so as far as the state of Utah is concerned, and Heather, you, you help me if I need, need some support. Heather's an expert, as is Adam. But I kind of am, we'll see. But the, the 24 credit diploma is the, the basic requirements by the state of Utah. So as long as they meet, the state doesn't even track, like the, the honors diploma, the IB diploma, the traditional diploma that we offer is, is just something that we choose to do here in Ogden. Other districts have similar things that are, you know, based on their, on their requirements. We do have a five by five schedule, which is a little bit different than some other districts. So we do have the opportunity for students to earn more credits, hence why we increased it to 28. But the basic diploma is just, so all of the George Washington students, pretty much, I would say almost all, get that basic diploma. They get that 24 credit diploma. The, the traditional diploma at the traditional high schools offers, they, they take more electives in order to get to that 28. So it's some more elective requirements to get to that 28 credit diploma. The IB diploma is very specific to the IB program and graduating from, from the IB program with the IB diploma. And then the honors diploma, there's some requirements laid out in the policy about certain classes that they have to take to hit a certain number of honors classes in order to qualify for that honors diploma. Some of the numbers from our schools over the last two years, and honestly, one of the things we were striving to do with rigor and just increasing more students, getting the traditional diplomas, we want to shrink that number of basic diplomas over time. Kind of the reason why, like using that graduation ceremony is like, hey, you can do this. You can take more classes. Don't take your senior year off. Take more classes is, is one of the overarching goals with that. It's not to punish students, it's to push them to get more classes and engage in more classes their senior year. So we had, like in 2024, for instance, we had 54 basic diplomas. We had 50 honors diplomas and 639 traditional diplomas. In 2025, that number went down in basics. We had 26 basic diplomas. So we cut it in nearly half. Honors diplomas, 58 and 581 traditional diplomas were given. So we're really striving for the students to stay, you know, that are at our traditional schools to earn that traditional diploma. And if there's a specific need or a reason, then there's an application process that, that we're going to work with the student, but it's, it's not, it's like there's, there's going to be multiple conversations about trying to get that traditional diploma and removing barriers so that they can get to that, to that 28 credit threshold by taking some CTE classes. You know, we want them to take, take advantage of free college classes, take advantage of the opportunities you have on high school to get ahead a little bit if you can. If that, does that answer those questions a little bit?
So could students attend class over summer to increase the credits? to increase the credits they're earning?
Students can, they have options to enroll in on some online opportunities over the summer to extend, like students that, some students, for instance, will take like the US government class. They will take like the, historically they'll take the, the Fit for Life class, the Financial Lit class, those are popular classes to take over the summer that students can kind of get out of the way. Students can accelerate. And then there is also credit recovery options available that we, that we provide students over the summer if perhaps they failed a class or fallen behind or fallen off track. So we have a lot of opportunities for students over the summer to try to um, remediate that credit loss as well. That, so yes, for sure.
If someone gets the basic diploma, does that limit them somewhat in what they can do in, in going to college or other things like that too? Or, or do colleges look at the traditional diploma and the honors diploma and the IB diploma at a much higher level? And they, and they can get accepted to better colleges?
So, good question. So the, the IB diploma, obviously that rigor embedded with IB is very like, it's, it's really looked at very um, well by, by university. So often our, our IB diploma students will have a lot of scholarship offers. The, the rigor associated with IB is prestigious and they know that it is, is a high rigor, similar to AP, AP students that take a lot of AP. Heather, don't look at me sideways. AP, AP is, is also looked at universally as a very um, you know, rigorous coursework. So, so those, those classes will, will set students apart when it comes to scholarship opportunities. Honors as well, if you're taking a lot of honors classes and a lot of high, high-level classes, it's gonna set that student apart a little bit from, from another student. As far as the traditional and the basic go, that doesn't have any real bearing on a student necessarily getting into college or the basic diploma suffices for any student that would want to continue their education. It's just with the traditional diploma, there's more credits or opportunity to take some of those concurrent enrollment or secure and technical education or IB, those rigorous courses that, that do help push kids into, into secondary education or to their post-secondary education.
You summed it up just great.
Except for IP, like IB, it's, yeah. Does that, does that make sense? Is that good? Okay.
So that was all for awareness.
So I was just thinking about possible future discussion items that um, maybe we could get a report for regarding post-high? What all is involved with that? And then my usual gentle push about the master board certification that we have just over two months to complete.
Thanks for bringing up post-high. That was something I remember at the end of the year, seeing pictures about. They had a graduation celebration. So can I make a request that we get that information? Because I would love to attend the post-high end of year celebration, graduation.
Yeah.
And, and Nalita, I thought, that, I think they'll be here at the next regular session as well. So maybe for the student of the month already, so we could maybe talk to them and have them, since they're here already, do a report out on post-high. That'd be awesome, yeah.
Thanks.
Amber? Yeah, when I finally give my report about my event at Fort Knox, I would love to have our ROTC also come with a few students and give a little presentation from their end as what's been going on in both of our schools, if possible.
Alexa?
So I'm actually over the JR TC for Ogden High School. We have a command and staff class. So I can definitely have the top students from Ogden Highs. And I also have contact with Ben Lowman's. We do plan on, on collaborating with them during the iron horse for their JR TC. So I can also get in contact with them. So if you need information about that, you can always email me.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thanks.
Okay. Um, having reached the end of our agenda, this meeting is now adjourned.